Okay, with that, the nod from TV 97 to 98. Today's, tonight is December 2nd, 2013. The city council meeting agenda is before us. It's just after 7:00 PM at City Hall, 200 North Lake Street, Cadillac, Michigan, 49601. The meeting is called to order tonight formally. I'd ask everyone at this point to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to our meeting tonight. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Burnett?
Here. Roll call taken care of. Approval of the agenda is up. It might make sense if the whole basketball team or the basketball players, they are present, at least some of them.
Football players.
Excuse me, I see that, but a couple of the basketball players had practice tonight, and they are here, and that's why I'm indicating that they're present as well. It turned out, they played football as well. But, thanks for correcting me, because I am wrong half the time, and I appreciate that. In any event, it looks like everyone is here. I wouldn't mind if it would help to move them up prior to public comments and after our agenda, if we wanted to move, the only proclamation we have tonight, if that's okay, to accompany, work with the group that's here tonight, which is substantial. We're very thankful that you've all come tonight.
Are there any other known changes to the agenda?
I don't have any.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changing the proclamations up to number two on the agenda.
Okay.
Support?
That, we'd have a new number two, which would be public comments moving down, which is number three. All right? So we have motion and support. Any questions, comments, compliments, or discussion? Hearing none? We would like a roll call of that, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. All right, so we have an amended agenda. We're going to move up a little bit. I'm going to have Art come up and help me. Art is our mayor pro temp. We'll leave that right where that is for now.
Look at that pile.
And, pardon me?
Look at that pile.
There's a pile.
Can you get through?
Yeah. Otherwise, this is going to make your table.
Oh, when you're moving.
Yeah, just when I, just when I move it.
Students are here tonight, too.
Watch your step. See there? Watch your step.
And, I get to be Bob Barker tonight, a little bit, as well. So thanks for everybody coming. Our superintendent, Joe Spry, is present. I appreciate that very much. Corey Lindell-Denman also in the house. Probably miss a few others. I'm going to have the staff, we're recognizing, acknowledging, and celebrating the football season, and the players, the families, the coaching staff, the administration. They've all come together. It's been a new trend that our council has done, which is watching what's going on with our youth in the community, and recognizing when they deserve attention, credit, and recognition. We're going to be giving that to you as a city. And the city of Cadillac's extremely proud of Team 118, of what they've accomplished, and their coaching staff, and the entire support crew that's worked with them, and the whole feeder program, which has a number of coaches, which oftentimes gets underappreciated and/or overlooked. But, in the house tonight is our coaching staff. I'm going to have the coaches come up first, because they deserve a little bit of attention here for managing these youngsters throughout their careers. Starting with head coach, Jim Webb. He's got the shirt. He still hasn't gotten me a shirt like this yet, but...
You'll have like four of these years.
Okay, if you have four. Jim, come on up. Why don't you stand over by Councilmember Malama? He's known not to bite. Coach Todd Baker, assistant head coach, Todd Baker, linebacker and D coordinator. Coach Webb is the overall head coach, and Coach Baker's one of the top three assistants, two assistants. Pat Henkel's working his way in. He's a defensive back coach. We enjoyed the backs this year. Mike Brynes is not here tonight. Van Bosman is not here. One of my favorites, Steve Myers, is here tonight. Receivers coach, also the ninth grade coach. He works up with the headphones upstairs. Sometimes we can hear him in the next room. It's not even connected. There's glass windows between there. I'll leave it.
He wears a headset.
He wears a headset for probably ear protection at some point. Bob Kellogg, not here tonight. Chuck Kenzie Orskey. Bob Kellogg's a linebacker and also a ninth grade D coordinator. Van Bosman, a JV D coordinator. Mike Brynes, a JV head coach. Just to go back, Chuck Kenzie Orskey again. Assistant offensive line coach. Brandon Oberhaus, the sideline headset, and head eighth grade coach, not here tonight. Marty Cartwright, scout, eighth, uh, D, eighth grade coach, D coordinator. Nate Metzger, he's a scout as well. That's an important aspect for these games, is to have those folks out there ahead of, ahead of time. He's, Nate is a head seventh grade coach. Tyler Hamilton, who does a lot of filming, scouting, and worked in the box with Steve Myers and others, the seventh grade coach, and also a D coordinator. So a wonderful team of adults that have worked with these kids. I've watched them, these guys, work over a decade together, 12, 13 years, watched what they've done as coaches at the top, but the other coaches are running a feeder program for these young men, and have really, they've really reached a pinnacle in what they've been trying to achieve over the years. And they're, they stuck to their program, even though through some tough years, and the community stuck with these coaches, and it's really come to a nice level. But those, those are our coaches, and we have Art Stevens come around and help me hand out. I'm going to read a proclamation first. We're actually going to try to bring all the kids in. If we miss anybody at the end, please raise your hand. Hopefully, that doesn't happen, but they had a big team this year, because people, the kids like football, and they like their coaches, they like this whole program, and they've excelled at it. So we've done a proclamation on their behalf, and I'd like to read it at this time, and it indicates whereas. "The 2013 Cadillac Viking Varsity Football Team, the 118th team in school history, recorded the most wins, 11 ever in a season, scored the most points, 402 in a season, and earned the titles of Big North Conference Champions and District Champions. The Vikings made their fifth straight playoff appearance and seventh in nine years, losing only to Comstock Park in the regional final. And whereas the outstanding athletes that made up the 2013 team were," and actually, I'm going to bring them up one at a time, so I'm going to pass on reading them at this time, and I'm going to bring them up. "Whereas the excellent coaching staff consisted of, as well as the same group that I just introduced." We won't go through that again, but a special thank you for their work, and led by head coach Jim, Jim Webb. Speaking of, whereas head coach Jim Webb, the longest tenured coach in Cadillac history, has achieved an overall coaching record of 82 and 79 in 16 years, and that is a record that he started out, he had a great first year, I think, and he had two or three tough ones, where he won like three games in three years. And he's worked over that, has a winning record.
Glad you brought that up. How many were on that?
Listening in the huddle. His football coaching career includes, actually, 160 wins. It spans 26 years as a head coach, 30 total years as football coach, and 35 years overall coaching sparts. It's amazing, 35 years of your life, and he looks so young. Coach Webb was chosen defensive coordinator for the 2008 All-Star Football Game, and was selected Regional Coach of the Year in 2000, 2005, 2009, and 2013 while coaching for Cadillac. And I would mention, because I was reading some of the weekend news, that he was also All-State Honorable Mention. Is that correct, Coach?
Yes.
All right, so we have an All-State coach in our midst. He deserved to actually hire, and he wants me to keep moving. Jalen, this quarterback, who's next in the proclamation, whereas senior quarterback, Jalen Brooks, broke several individual records over the past three years, including the single season. Come on up here, Jalen. Do you want to sit in my seat for a while?
Careful, it's hot.
You think the rushing, the rushing defensive line is tough? Come on up and have a seat, anytime. This is Ja, Jalen Brooks. He's a senior, three-year quarterback. Jalen Brooks broke several individual records over the past three years, including the single-season rushing record, 1,705, excuse me, 1,754 yards. Career rushing record, he's got that of all these years of football. And these have been, we've had some unbelievable running backs. Norm Smith, who went to Central, is one. Jim Bowman ends up playing in pro, and, I mean, it goes on and on, some of the running backs we've had over the years. This guy holds the record, and he's standing right here. Career passing record, again, so rushing and passing, 2,524 yards. And they, they like to keep track of our beautiful Memorial Stadium. That rushing record is, in one game, is held by Jalen Brooks as well. 273 yards and only 20 carries, which I could have Owen do the math on that. It looks like...
A lot.
13, five a carry, and 20 carries. The guy had almost 300 yards in the game versus Alpena in 2012. Whereas, the rock band Kiss posted a shout-out on its Facebook page in support of the Vikings prior to the regional final game, which was unbelievable, and it tied this team back to the 1975 football team that had Kiss come here. This is a special group of young men, and therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Burnett, mayor of the city of Cadillac, do hereby convey special recognition to the 2013 Cadillac Viking Varsity Football Team, and to their head coach and assistant coaches, and wish to thank and congratulate them for their outstanding achievements presented on this second day of December 2013. I'm going to give the first proclamation to their head coach. You could sit in the mayor's seat if you want to. I'm going to let him, he's going to pass on the seat, but would you mind just saying a few words before I run the kids through? I'm not sure how the logistics are going to go by getting them in here, but...
I'd just like to, obviously, you know, thank the city for recognizing this great group of young men that we had back there. Without them, without the assistant coaches that I have here, the administrative support, and, and really, top-down all the way through, we have great parental support this year, did a lot of team meals for us, great support throughout the year. When we talk about Team 118, it really is everybody involved in pitching in and supporting, and it was outstanding. I don't want to forget the wives, my wife's standing out there, so I want to make sure I also thank the wives, because most of the time, the coaches are never home, and it's very important that they support us as well, which they all do, and it's a terrific group, terrific family, if you will. Team 118, just a great, great group of young men. If you were able to attend any of the games or any of our events, they represented as well. Great character, great passion, and just a heck of a lot of fun to be with.
All right. Head coach Jim Webb, Todd Baker, there's your proclamation, your name's in it. Congratulations. There's a couple extra here, and I'm going to get...
You're not doing your job.
You're going to get your pay cut in half.
You can call him the defensive coordinator when they do that kind of stuff.
Pat Henkel? You blame the defensive coordinator. Pat did a great job, I've mentioned, with his defensive backs. These poor guys, they're like city council members, because they stand out there all by themselves, and if they get burned, or there's a pass caught right next to them, everybody in the whole stadium's looking at. What number was that? And it didn't happen much. They had a couple, couple tough games, and really, your defensive backs took you almost to forward field with their play. And this was a total team effort to go as far as you did. Absolutely amazing. Historic season, 11-0, up to a point, and that is a historic record again, as well as going basically as far as any team has in Cadillac history. So I'm going to, Jalen, I'll give you a first, do you want to say anything? Actually, we'll wait until we get everybody out here, okay? Give you a few seconds to think about it.
I'm excited.
Okay, we're going to start right off. Victor, Victor Burnt is in the house. Victor has got tremendous size, and he uses it to his advantage. Victor, congratulations. Wide receiver, and did some good job, good stuff for the team. We're going to try to get you all in here, logistically, but Victor's number one on the team. Aaron Wilkinson, my nephew's coming in the house. I see his dad was in here as well, maybe his mom, too. Aaron, and then to speak at Aaron's class, predicted he'd get an interception, didn't I, Aaron? And what'd you do?
Yeah, he predicted it. First hour.
All right, first hour. It's easy to predict, because he basically had an interception every game. All right, everybody that gets something, I'm going to have you go that direction. Just, I'm having my logistics guy out there, which the city has logistics guy, and I didn't mean the coaches, but that's okay. He's not listening in the huddle again.
Everybody let me do something.
All right. I, I got it. Andrew, Andrew Emmington, the leg. This kid has grown. He's, is he not here tonight? That's too bad. We'll make sure that he gets it, and we'll leave a pile. Andrew, by the way, is the kicker, almost never missed a extra point. Ethan Myers, excellent special teams player for the Vikings. Ethan, congratulations on your tremendous season. David Anderson, one of our cornerbacks, outside linebacker, very popular young man. Happened to grow up with his dad, a few years younger. He still looks younger. Just tell him I said hi. Good job, David, and congratulations. He's a third-year player, Louis Finch, Louis Finch, one of the best baseball players in the area. Lefty, safety, most tackles than any safety I remember, and it's actually a good thing, because he comes up and reads the play around the line. Logan Webb, receiver. And Doug Webb is here tonight. Mrs. Webb, I think she helps calls plays, doesn't she, Logan?
Yeah.
Especially Saturday mornings.
It's ski.
Yep. Okay, Zach. Okay. And Logan is the son of head coach Jim Webb, by the way, and there's a lot of anticipation. Is Coach Webb going to coach again? It's year by year. It's year by year, but we would really appreciate if he did come back. I know his family's gone through a lot over the years. Zach Hiscock is up. He got a touchdown in one of the first games. Zach here tonight, number 19, not present. We'll thank him. He is an up-and-coming player. I think we're going to see more of next year as a running back. Here comes a hockey player playing football, Patrick Briggs. Come on, Patrick. Patrick has to be one of the most confident players in Viking history. Congratulations, Patrick. Can you give us the fist move real quick? He'll be running a touchdown back. Most people just want to get in the end zone. This guy's got the fist up on the 50-yard line. I'm in. And that will go down in history forever. Coach, you, you coach that stuff, don't you?
No.
No?
No, he doesn't.
Gavin Hoffman, very nice young man, who's worked hard in the football field. I see his dad out there tonight. How are you, Gavin? Very popular young man. Keep up the good work. Team 118 continues.
Tanner Durrow.
Art calls him Tanner Dur, or Tanner Dur, the most mispronounced name in the history of football, and a baseball player. Tanner Dur not able to be here tonight. Great running back for Cadillac. The whole team played amazingly, yes.
Nate Hauk.
Okay. Nate Hauk. We're going to make sure we get this right. Nate is the tandem running back with Tanner Dur. Nate Hauk, congratulations on your season. We know, we know your mom, by the way. Like, we're going to hear from her in public comment in a second.
Doesn't go to the school.
Yeah, he doesn't go. Bradley Hubbard, outstanding outside linebacker. He's made some super plays in some big games. Congratulations, Brad. Ethan Baker. Ethan, I think, was moved up for playoffs. He's a sophomore. Look at this young man. Any relation to any other Bakers we know?
Eric Baker.
There you go. Eric Baker. He's a school board member, by the way, so it'll be extra nice to... Ethan, congratulations on your season. Blake Ford, hockey. See if this guy's got any black eyes or, or so. Great middle linebacker, like Dick Butkus. Do you know Dick Butkus?
I do.
All right. Look him up on the internet. He played like Dick Butkus.
Jake Allen's.
All right. Jake Allen's. Is Jake in the house? His wife, his mom, Kim's here, and we miss his dad, Jeff, very much. Congratulations on your wonderful season. Jake did a super job as a cornerback. All right, here comes the battleship. Is he here tonight? Michael Holdship. This kid is so strong. The kids, the tacklers run from him. Michael, and he's a punter like there's no other. Congratulations on your wonderful season. Here's our fullback at the halfback position, the first one we've had in a number of years. And the kids, when he was playing JV football, the coaches recognized that nobody wanted to tackle him in practice, and they said they basically, they had to move him up. What a great player he's been for the Vikings sophomore. He's going to keep them going where they are. Kenyon, come on up. The guitar-playing Kenyon Copier also is a skier. Can you tell the kid's a skier? There he is. Kenyon, congratulations on your outstanding season, outside linebacker. Had his elbow basically dislocated at one point early on, and missed a couple games, and came back with tremendous support of his family and the coaching staff. TJ Baker, the kid, tackles, he's got like a magnet for the football. I think he had more tackles than anybody in the streak. He'd get 20 tackles in a game just for, for showing up. Congratulations on your season. Matt Myers, our center, the most underlooked player. Let's give him a high five. Poor guy, he's in the middle, and he's just in there with the bruisers, but he did a super job as our center. I actually believe he played two, started two years in a row. Matt, look over this way. He did. He's a great lineman, and is a base of our line, which did an amazing job. They're not the biggest kid. See, he's not real big for a center. And we've got some kids coming up. Kasup is here, for example. We'll show you what they've done with small linemen. Connor Hunter, sorry, Hunter Schmaker. I grew up with his dad, Jimmy Onchapin, and he's still living in the same house. Hunter, looks like an Olympian, not here tonight. We'll make sure he gets that. Trevor Martin. Have you ever seen a kid? Team 118 was a big team, because one big guy here, and was a big player in this. Trevor, when he hit somebody, we could hear you up in the broadcasting booth. It made noise, and I don't think people like to get hit by, by Trevor either. But a defensive lineman, extraordinary. Travis Whaley. Travis? Travis got moved up for the playoffs. So you were an outstanding JV. We're going to see more of you. Travis, thanks for coming tonight. Congratulations. Thomas Cranack. He's a big kid. This is our big lineman. This guy is all muscle. He's got a nice girlfriend that I met last game. So the linemen are getting the girls, Thomas. Hunter Linton, another one of our huge linemen coming up. Hunter, congratulations. Great season. There's your proclamation. Hunter, not tremendous size again. This is a testament to the coaching staff. So far, we're all fitting in, and Ed Wynn. Ed's not here tonight. So, good job, Ed. Johnny Durga. My cousin. Actually, Aaron Wilkinson's my cousin, so is Johnny Durga. I don't know why I missed the football boat, but these kids are amazing. Congratulations, Johnny. He's a defensive lineman. There's your big muscle right there for a defensive lineman. They all have average size, great quickness, smarts, and they're coached well. He's actually, does have some muscle. Cody Stillwell? Here we go. Now we're getting some size here. Here's our big guy. Cody did a super job on the offensive line, played a little defense, did a wonderful job. Cody, congratulations. Johnny McCluskey's in the house. One of our powerful reserves. Johnny, good job this year. Congratulations, and thanks for coming tonight. Sam Dunman, who also is a hockey player. Sam is one of our outstanding linemen as well for the offensive side. Don't the big size here? Again, a hockey player, quick, strong, and these kids are smart, and they really had the best attitude, by the way, of any team I've seen. I have been watching teams since 1966.
Zeb Borzma.
Zeb's in the house. Zeb is one of our linemen as well. Did a super job there. Zeb, good to see you tonight. Congratulations. All right?
Mackenzie Oliver.
Mackenzie Oliver. How you doing, Mackenzie? Congratulations on your outstanding season. Team 118. Carl Weir, Art likes to call him Carl Wire. He's not wiry. Carl has strength, and he sat out the entire junior year, because he's a transfer. Come here, don't go too far, Carl. Turn around for a sec. There you go. Carl's 300 pounds, we'll say that, because it's in the roster. It's all muscle, and this kid won games for us with his size, strength, and, and they kind of targeted him, because he was bigger than the rest of the kids, and they figured they'd get Carl down, they could win. Didn't work, and time after time, they couldn't get Carl. So Carl sat as a junior and waited the whole year, did nothing but practice, and his big blast was as a senior. And we couldn't be happier to have him in Cadillac, and he did an outstanding job. Carl, congratulations on your wonderful football season as a defensive lineman, and occasionally offense. All right, Connor Kazuba. Does not have his hair cut, so it does weigh a little bit more. Connor, part of the spirit of the team, one of the captains. Connor is a defensive lineman. In fact, we'll call him a Noah's guard. He's right in the middle of the whole thing, with the biggest players on the other side, and with his smaller stature, was able to pull off amazing things. And with his quickness, he caused the runners constantly to run into Carl Weir, or run into Martin, and just, he was really, he was amazing for what he did. And the coaches, to see a smaller kid that could play up front and utilize that, was just absolutely amazing. So Connor, congratulations on your leadership, your attitude, which is symbolized by the rest of the team. So congratulations. Johnny Alberts. Johnny Alberts, one of our reserve players. We're going to see some more of this young man. How are you doing? Good. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it very much. Congratulations on your season. Cody Lux, one of our linemen. Cody not in the house tonight?
Morgan Caldwell.
Morgan Caldwell. Morgan, congratulations to you. Great season. Good luck to you.
Brandon Richard.
Brandon Richard, almost to the end. Brandon, congratulations. One of our middle linebackers. You're strong. Just shake these guys' hands, you can see who belongs where. All right, our final player, he kind of knows it. He's going to come in. One of our other captains, Justin Liptech, who's the son of Barb and the guy from the M-Daw. What's his name? Yeah, Rick. Rick Liptech, and also your aunt is Joy Vandry. All right, so this is, this is little Rick Liptech, known as Justin Liptech, and he's a tight end, as you can see, and hopefully wants to play football in college as a tight end. We'll see what happens.
Some extras for this.
Okay.[1659.32] All right, our final player, he kind of knows it. He's going to come in, one of our other captains. Justin Lipptak, who's the son of Barb and the guy from the M-Daw. What's his name? Yeah, Rick. Rick Lipptak and also your aunt is Joy Vandry. All right, so this is little Rick Lipptak known as Justin Lipptak. And he's a tight end, as you can see, and hopefully wants to play football in college as a tight end. We'll see what happens. Okay. So I'm going to ask your captain or captains, you want to come up? Anybody want to talk? Jalen, I promised you you'd say a few words. Jalen was the quarterback. Is that going to be a mistake? You did forget your handshake, bud. So I'm going to say, good day to your four captains. They did a video, you guys should probably look. The entire public should see this video they did. Number four is not here tonight. Where's Mr. Lipptak? All right. Okay. You want to say something?
Yeah. I know that Bill Barnett had said something about my records and the accomplishments that I have made, and I wouldn't have been able to do it without the coaching staff and the guys up front. I'm really thankful that I have them, and that's the only reason I have been able to do what I have been. I'd like to thank the parents, too. They were great supporters this year. They were just as fired up as we were about the season. And the fans, I've never seen crowds like we've had this year, and I'm really excited about what we've started, and I hope that we can keep on bringing it to the table each year.
All right, congratulations on your Allstate and your leadership.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Do you think they could sing the fight song?
Do you think so? I know they could. Give me one second. Did I forget anybody in the crowd that needed to be recognized tonight? Rich Giddens is here tonight. Rich, are we doing okay out there? Looks like we are. We do have some extra we want to make sure you take back with you. Rich Giddens, who I didn't introduce, the athletic director, has been around the corner. He's a pretty safe place to be tonight, but he's avoided that. Anything else, Mr. Briggs, Kasuba, or Lipptak?
This is actually to the staff, especially, and the students. We talked about this with the volleyball team. Some of you are here for basketball. But the one thing that is amazing, and the superintendent's here to hear this, but they were ambassadors for Cadillac. Everybody talked about how good a sports you were and how your team was, and you guys represented Cadillac amazingly on the road. So we thank you for doing that, and it means a lot to our area. I was out of state at different spots and they talk about, I was in West Branch the other day, and they talked about your football team. So it means a lot that you guys are doing this for Cadillac. Thanks.
All right, thanks for your representation. Nobody go anywhere, and I will get you out of here. Thank you, council, for being patient tonight and not talking in the huddle. I did bring out one more thing because I thought there should be some special recognition. And if we could have Coach Webb come up here. And Mr.?
Yeah, I'm feeling, Connor.
Your Moses stick. Are you Moses?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I didn't recognize him without the beard. Okay. All right. We did think of Coach Webb, who has coached 35 years, and his system is just, it's become historic. And he's an Allstate coach. We have an Allstate quarterback here. A lot of these players, actually, in my opinion, deserved Allstate with their competitive spirit, as Coach Baker would tell me, and their attitude, which was they're coachable, they listened. And the system that the coaches have put into place, all of them. I wish I could hand out what I'm going to to each and every one of these coaches and to the parents who also fostered their kids through this program, which it's been a success for them, too. But we do have a special award that doesn't come out very much, and it's coming out this week, and there's one coming out next week. But it's the Key to the City, presented on December 2nd, 2013, too. Jim Webb, head football coach, for many years of excellence in coaching Cadillac-Viking varsity football. Signed, William S. Barnett, the mayor. It actually is a key, and you can see if it works. And did you want to? You have a place to go when you can't get in your house because of Deb here tonight again? Does she want to come up for a quick picture? And maybe Rich Giddens or Joe? Yes, anyone wants to come up. Congratulations. Let me give this to you formally. Coach Webb, Key to the City. Congratulations on your coaching. Deb Webb. And Rich Giddens and Joe Spry. You two, I'm going to let the pictures be taken if Mr. Charmley would like to do that. How are you doing? Okay, so he's got us. Congratulations. Joe, do you want to say anything about your football team, your program, your school, and these kids?
Well, you know, anytime you hand me the mic, I've got great things to say about our school and our team here, and I'm so proud of them. And as you said, they are awesome ambassadors for Cadillac area public schools. And like you, I've heard wonderful things about what they've been able to do for our community, for our school district, and I'm so proud of all of you. Thank you for the great job you've done. You've put us on the map, and there's been great things said all across the state about your recognition, your teamwork, your sportsmanship, and you've done us proud. And coaches, thank you, Coach Webb. All of you, thank you so much for what you've done, to be able to help these young men achieve what they've done this year. And can't say enough great things about our athletic programs in Cadillac area schools. We have a AAA program, whether it's academics, athletics, or arts, and tonight, we're really celebrating the athletic programs. And we've got a fantastic athletic director here that's been behind them and supporting them all the way.
All right. Thanks. That's Joe Spry, our superintendent. One more quick word from the, he does like to talk, he actually helped out on the announcing booth this year, Rich Giddens.
Thanks. Just want to say, as you guys, being the athletic director, it's been fun for me. I enjoy the long tournament runs. We had a great fall, and we've had a great season, and I'm just glad that you allowed me to come along for the ride. So it's been a wonderful thing, and it's a great thing to represent Cadillac out and the other athletic directors around the state. They know who you are, and because of the teams we've had, we're definitely known out in the state of Michigan. Thanks again.
All right. That is going to conclude our celebration of Team 118. Is anybody else, you going to announce you're coming back next year, Coach?
Always. You must know something I don't know.
Welcome. Love to have you. No, we're not. Congratulations to everybody from the team. Fight Song? Okay, we did have a, we have a request for the Fight Song. You guys have learned this, so you come in front of the crowd after every game, take your helmets off before the bell. And I'm going to let you, Art, do you want to kick him off on that?
No. You are personal.
Okay, we've had singers, so you can sing it a little bit, but go ahead, pick your All right.
(Singing) Watch the boys keep going. Fighting teams are bound to win. They're fighting with a vim, rah rah rah. See that line of weakening? We're going to win this game. Fight, fight, come on, team, fight. Victory CHS.
Good luck to you guys, all of you broadly. Good luck again. Yep, good luck, Patrick. Okay. Okay. Yep, get in one line, shake the city council's hands. We're all very proud of you guys. Congratulations on your season. Trevor, nice work out there. Yep, Logan, this guy can catch the ball, and he can block. And he gets the girls. David, congratulations on your season. Congratulations on your season. Great job again. Great job. Thanks for coming tonight. Battleship Myers, congratulations, congratulations. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Yep, congratulations. Team 118, Johnny D. Sam, good luck with the body checks. Blake, same thing. Good job. Mr. Stillwell, congratulations. Good job, buddy. He's got good speed. Good job, Keenan. Yep. Whaley. Baker. Aaron, good to see you. Coach Pinkel and Coach, you're welcome. Congratulations on your fabulous season.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. You decide which way to go.
I decided to keep one for the mayor for him to keep.
There's one on the floor.
I saved one for you to have as a.
Thank you. Because I didn't have one, I could get one always.
You can tell what you do during your day, right?
You did a good job.
I didn't even put down my hand now.
That's all right.
Yeah. Obviously, they might.
Nice job.
Yep. Good job. Want you to adjourn?
I wish it to adjourn.
Good job.
Don't you love how we all jumped on you in the basketball stadium?
Yeah. Yeah. They had a basketball practice tonight, and their coach called to want to make sure what time they were going to be here.
I'm confused now. This is, no, I'm just kidding.
Okay, we are going to continue. The crowd is almost out of the building. So a special thank you to Team 118. Chad, are we still okay? He's given us the two thumbs up. Chad Raybald withstood the crowd out there. Nice turnout by the families as well. A lot of parents in the house tonight. There's the Durgas. Mr. Logistics. How are the logistics going on? Okay. I'm going to let the, there's some folks waiting in the hallway that are now in the building, which is great. You're welcome to come in. Mr. Roberts, how are you doing with seating?
A little wide on seats.
There's plenty of seats up there.
Yep, we do have seats in front if you'd like to come on up. You're welcome to. And you can stand out there if you'd like as well, whatever you're comfortable with. I think the leadership's in the house tonight. I'm going to guess leadership.
And Reba, Reba's here?
Reba. Reba McIntyre. Look at that, nice looking group. Tac, how'd you get in the group?
They needed somebody to, you know, an elder.
All right. Okay, we've taken some time to recognize the student body and the football team and their accomplishments. Thanks again, council, for letting that occur tonight. We are now up to public comment, and public comment occurs twice in the meeting, once now and once at the end. So thank you for bearing with us, those of you that wanted to do public comment. Mrs. Houck, Connie Houck, why don't you just come up since you were the first taker? And then Christine, we'll get you up next.
We'll do this again.
Thank you for your patience, and congratulations on your son's accomplishment.
Yeah, thank you. That was very nice of you guys to do that for the boys. They really enjoyed it. I wanted Connie Houck from Prine Newhoff at 1202 North Mitchell, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the Saw Grant application was successfully submitted today to Lansing, so that application is in. And I also wanted to thank the city staff for working so hard with us to pull all the numbers together that we needed to submit that grant. So it is in.
Thank you very much, Connie.
You're welcome.
All right. Public comment is open. Ms. Barton was wanting to speak earlier. Please come forward. If you'd identify her.
Christine Barton, 205 Blojet Street, Cadillac.
Thank you.
I understand that on December 12th, the Cadillac Ethics Ordinance established in June of 2012, prescribing or rejecting certain behaviors of both city staff and elected officials will be put to the test during a hearing in response to a complaint filed against Officer Todd Golnick by the council member Doug Melama. The complaint, in essence, states that Detective Golnick used the city's logo on an endorsement letter in support of a mayoral candidate. Golnick did so in his capacity as president of the Cadillac Police Command Officers Association. The complaint states, in effect, that by using the city's logo, which was in fact an inappropriate usage of the logo, an impression was reflected that the city of Cadillac and some of its employees were endorsing a particular candidate. The letter may also have misrepresented the Police Officers Association of Michigan's involvement in this endorsement. There appears to be a question as to the veracity of the information which was shared regarding a vote by the police union. There appear to be no minutes of a meeting in which such a vote was said to have taken place. The question remains, did it take place? Was the vote taken? Now, it would seem to me as a citizen that the city of Cadillac's established ethics policy, the city's personnel policy, and the police department handbook, if consulted, would in fact reflect judgments finding Detective Golnick's behavior questionable and inappropriate. A declaration of endorsement of an electoral candidate as a citizen in a letter of opinion to the paper could be deemed appropriate. I say could be. However, a letter appearing as an expensive display ad in the local newspaper paid for by a committee serving a particular candidate appears unethical and ill-conceived, at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it is public comment time. Anyone wishing to come up and share their public thoughts certainly may do so. Good evening, Cynthia.
Cynthia Rotella, 319 Petrie Road. I had hoped, following the recent election, that certain members of this council and city officials would get the message that people are sick and tired of being harassed and persecuted simply for expressing a different point of view. Apparently not, because Mr. Melama has now added Todd Golnick to a long list of good citizens under attack simply for speaking out. Mr. Melama, your complaint is utterly baseless and against the ordinance as it stands. These accusations are particularly troubling, and they're troubling on multiple levels. The ordinance itself provides collective bargaining agreements. Sanctions shall not be construed to diminish or impair the rights of an officer or employee under any collective bargaining agreement. Under state law, this ordinance and their collective bargaining agreement, unions have every right to endorse a candidate of their choice. How does this violate the ethics ordinance? Furthermore, how is it that you singled out one member of an organization that submitted a group endorsement? In addition, how is it that the ordinance allows Mr. Petya and Mr. Homier to be two of the people who decide the initial reasonableness of the complaint to also sit on a panel, which hears the evidence and ultimately makes a final determination? Furthermore, those same two individuals had seen this letterhead multiple times prior to the endorsement and never expressed any concern that it was potentially misleading or problematic. They expressed no reservations whatsoever. Now, suddenly, you have a problem with it to the extent that there are potential criminal sanctions involved? Something is rotten in the state of Denmark. And this last point about the criminal repercussions is perhaps the most disturbing. There are criminal charges carry with it entitled the accused to well-established checklist of procedural safeguards. Perhaps you've heard of them. The right to remain silent, the right to an attorney, a presumption of innocence. So now, under this ethics ordinance that carries potential criminal charges, how can you justify holding a hearing under this ordinance without violating Mr. Golnick's due process rights? For whatever reason, these matters were not given due consideration prior to enacting the ordinance. Rather than compounding the errors by proceeding with a defective process, I'd ask you to dismiss the complaint and, at the very least, adjourn the hearing until these matters can be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else is public comment? Mr. McCurdy, please come forward. Beau, how are you this evening?
Good. Lions won. I soaked that in, every moment of it. Beau McCurdy, 417 Crestview. I'd like to address the overblown outrage over the Cadillac Police Detective Lieutenant Todd Golnick and his perfectly fine and legal endorsement letter from a majority of the Cadillac Police Command Officers Association members. Does the logo have a trademark? No. Has it been used numerous times without having anyone have an issue with it? Yes. Do you really think that Todd Golnick thought that the use of letterhead he had used over and over was going to start another round of spending the taxpayers' money? No. But the way things work around this council, maybe he should have. The city has no right to interfere in union business. Let's put a stop to this now before we find ourselves again in litigation. Is it your intention to risk an unfair labor practice suit? Do we really need to continue following the lead of our soon-to-be former mayor? Or can you have the guts to break the chains that bind you?
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Carla is coming up. How are you tonight?
Carla Filkins, 327 Granite Street, here in Cadillac. What I'd like to comment on tonight is the proposed adoption of Resolution 2013-3039 to establish the position of Director of Law Enforcement Services and abolish the position of Public Safety Director. As I don't recall ever having heard any discussion about creating such a position, I'm a bit concerned over the abrupt nature in which it appears to be being brought through. It ultimately eliminates a longstanding position. This subject deserves the time needed for public hearings, discussion, and comments, so that we can all understand why we would change said title and what the qualifications of the new title are. There was no mention or recommendation to create said position in the study that the city paid for some time ago. The last documented recommendation that I could find in any of the minutes was to stay with the one chief system that we have, because ultimately, it would keep everything cost-neutral for us. What is proposed is perhaps a rather unique position. There's been a concern expressed to me that this may violate Act 78. I would suggest that the council should have a legal opinion regarding this question. If one has already been prepared, then perhaps it should be shared and made public so that it could be reviewed. If you believe this is a good idea now, it'll be a good idea after the first of the year. If it's a bad idea now, it's going to be a bad idea after the first of the year. So, please don't, in haste to accomplish something before the change in leadership on December 31st, put the city at risk for any more litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? It is open comment, public comment time. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. Mr. McGuire, nice to see you tonight.
Jim McGuire. My address is 380 Bramblewood, which is in Herring Township. And although I currently live in Herring Township, I lived in the city of Cadillac for 25 years. And if someone asks me, "Hey, Jim, where do you live?" I live in Cadillac. So, that everything that happens in Cadillac and the actions taken by this council represent not just the 10,000 souls that live in Cadillac, but probably the 20,000 people that surround the Cadillac area, Cadillac proper. I have been appalled at the nitpicking, the undercutting by Mr. Melama, yourself. I was appalled to a point where I really had to say something tonight, because I don't think it speaks well for our community. And even though I live in Herring Township, whatever good things happen in Cadillac represent the entire township, and bad things lead to dissension. And I think that we... You just said such nice words about our Cadillac football team, and I was so happy to hear that. I mean, what great things to be proud of. And I can say that some of the actions that this council has taken in this last six months makes me very disgusted with their outlook on the future of Cadillac. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? It is public comment. Feel free to come forward if you'd like to give us your thoughts, two bits. Anything? Good. We're going to close it down. There's one of those at the end. And we're going to move through the consent agenda at this time, which it looks like we have a couple of things on there, special meeting minutes from November 18th, also our city council minutes from a regular meeting held on November 18.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Support.
The other comments about those minutes? Hearing none. Sandy, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We skipped over and took care of proclamations. Thanks again for that. Public hearings, we do have a public hearing tonight, and the first public hearing is a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 2013-3036 to approve an application from Avon Automotive for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $4,067,235.55. Again, it's a $4 million IFT coming from Avon Automotive. And congratulations. I'm going to open the public hearing formally. There are employees in the house tonight, so I'm going to let him come up and say hello to us, if that's okay with everybody. And introduce yourself, if you would, and maybe start it off, and then we'll get over to staff. But the hearing is open.
I'm Greg Spencer from Avon Automotive. I'm the general manager.
All right. Anything you'd like to share? Again, thanks for bringing this forward. This is a tremendous investment in your facility, and we're pleased to see that and appreciate the presence in our community. Anything, maybe you want to quickly summarize how that adds up, if you can, if you don't mind, and give us maybe the folks back home a little preview of what's happening here?
Well, the application is really meant to retain 395 jobs in the Cadillac area. Very important to our business to make us competitive. Keep that competitiveness and keep those jobs here in Cadillac.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. I'm going to go to hang right there if you want. Actually, you might want to just have a seat for a second. I'm going to let the public come in after I go to staff here. But staff, any intro into this or any further explanation with regard to the $4 million investment coming forward from Avon Automotive and our consideration of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for that investment?
I think it's all been said. The only thing I'll add is that it is for a period of 12 years.
All right. Now, the retained jobs and/or added jobs, or what is the number?
The retention of 395 positions.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is open to the public. Allow Mr. Petchia to talk a little bit, Mr. Spencer too, but the public has an opportunity right now. This is our public hearing on this proposed personal property tax. It's basically a tax reduction for a personal property investment. So, I'm seeing no one else come forward. I will close the public hearing at this point, turn it over to council, and you might be back up here, Mr. Spencer, in a second. But council, do you have any questions of their company representative or staff or fellow council members? I don't hear much discussion. So, anything else, Mr. Spencer, you'd like us to know? Good. Thank you very much. Anything else, council, before a vote and a motion?
We made to make a motion.
The motion off, and this has been that record-setting year. This is over 17 million this year in new investments, and it kind of ties in. We had the leadership class here tonight and what they're doing for the community. This is the backbone of our community and Avon. And you mentioned the 395 jobs it's retaining. That's amazing, and a thank you from us to the company and the workers because making the decision to do business in Cadillac. So, it's actually very exciting. Actually, I feel it an honor to make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2013-3036 as it's presented, which would approve the application for Avon Automotive in the amount of $4,067,235.55 for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any last-minute discussion on this or other compliments?
The only thing I wanted to mention, what I mentioned two weeks ago in talking with Lee Richards, he had stated that is concerning the mixer, is that there's a choice between going out of the country, I won't say what country, or having it brought here. And it's the IFT that was one of the big turning points. And of course, the personnel that we have in Cadillac, the workers we have, the hard workers, and the support that not only the city gives, but the community as a whole gives to industry. So, I'll repeat myself.
Okay. With a motion and support, any other comments? Hearing none. Sandy, who's our clerk over there, we're making her work hard tonight. Can you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Spencer. Please tell everyone back at the shop. Good work. Keep it up. Very welcome. Happy to support you. Communications, we have none for tonight. We move next to appointments. We do have appointments, and actually, there's three of them in a block, if everyone's okay with that. But Marcus, what is going on with our appointments, or would this be Sandy?
This would be Sandy. If you could read the appointments and their years and their boards accordingly, that'd be perfect.
It's actually, there's three appointments, two to the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission, and one to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They're actually reappointments, both for three-year terms. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's Larry Bontrager. I don't know if that's right or not. He's been serving on the Board of Appeals for 10 years. For the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission, it's Jill Brown, who has been serving for eight years, and Nan Taylor, who has been serving for six years.
Okay. So, we have a couple for the Courthouse Hill Historic District, Jill Brown, Nan Taylor, also the Zoning Board of Appeals, Larry Bontrager. Larry's been here a decade, Jill, eight years, Nan, six. So, great community service by all these volunteers. Do we have a problem with a unified vote for all of them at once to save a little time here? Mr. Petchia, Mr. Homier, okay with that? And it appears our clerk is okay with that as well. Council, are there issues with that? If not, proceed with a motion, if you would.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointments to the Courthouse Hill Historic District of Jill Brown and Nan Taylor for a period of three years, expiring on 12/31/16. And the Zoning Board of Appeals for Larry Bontrager for three years, expiring on 1/1 of 2017.
Very good.
Support.
There's a support. Any discussion about Larry, Jill, or Nan, or any of these boards? Hearing none. Motion and support. Sandy, why don't you go ahead?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, Community Spotlight. We're actually going to have two spotlights. They don't know it yet, but the leadership project's in the house tonight as well. Maybe we'll get some introductions, so you can prepare yourself for that. Steve is here, and I think Tex, as well, is back there. My vision's not great in the dark. Marcus, what do we have tonight with regard to the Community Spotlight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We do have representatives from the Cadillac area Honor Guard here this evening to provide you with some information about their organization and their latest initiative. And I believe you said you see them?
I do.
Oh, there he is.
Looks like at least one. Tex Gladings here, I think. Is that who that is back there?
Steve Birdwall, 1225 Floral Street, Cadillac.
Steve, great to have you tonight. Thanks for coming.
I didn't have a whole lot of time to put this together, but I'm not passing this up because it's a good picture that's on this. This is an article that was in the paper about a month ago to start this off with. We have been around since 1996. We started out with three gentlemen back in 1996 to get a Honor Guard together because of American Legion and VFW. Their separate Honor Guards couldn't get enough people together. So, Lou Richardson, Ray Nelson, and the other gentleman, I can't remember his name. He's no longer in Cadillac anyway. But they all started with the idea of putting 20 guys together to do funerals for military personnel. Since that time, we now have 40. I think I just got a new member. We have 41 members strong now. This is the uniform that we started in 1996. Gray pants, black suit coat, all from J.C. Penney. That was a company that we could go to. And well, as of the thing, the sports coat's getting hard to come by. The gray pants are 14 different shades of gray now and stuff. I'm here to ask if there's anything the city of Cadillac or the council members can do to help us raise some money. We have been approved through the Cadillac Community Foundation for a $9,000 grant if we raise the other $18,000. We are setting up almost $10,000 raised already. We do a lot for the community, other than the funerals. We have a Fourth of July Parade we do here. We also do and run the memorial service on Memorial Day. We've taken that over, basically. It used to be each individual organization in town took it, but the Honor Guard more or less takes it over now and do it, which I've been the emcee, I think, for 10 years now doing this. I don't know if it's feasible. I know that the city council will help events, but I don't know if they'll help any individual group. But we do a good job. We're getting better. Mr. Burke is my other co-commander. He couldn't make it tonight, but our goal is to make this a bigger and better outfit, to pay respect to our fallen veterans, is basically what it is, and to help the community. We do a lot of things for the community. We brought the wall to Cadillac. We've been involved with the Fall Festival, the Brick to Brick, or Back to the Bricks. We've helped out on that.
Freedom Festival.
Freedom Festival. I've been on that for a couple of years now, thanks to seeing one smart remark after a thing one time. It says, "How are you going to hear that? Says, 'Go to a meeting.'" So, I go to their all their meetings. We do schools. Any school, we've had quite a few schools ask us, Forest View, Pine River and stuff. We went out and done flag presentations and stuff like that for this, and we're willing to help out anything in the city of Cadillac. The new uniform. This is our new uniform that we proposed to get. We went with a company out of Ohio. It's USA-made. The reason we picked this company, they've been around 120-some years, and they will guarantee that uniform for as long as we buy it. Thirty years from now, if I'm not around or whatever, these guys got it. They'll have the address. That exact coat and that exact pair of pants in color will be guaranteed unless they go out of business for some reason. But they've been doing it for 130-some years. They do a lot of police officers, fire departments, EMT, uniforms and stuff like that. So, any help I can get, I'd really appreciate it. I know you can't vote on it tonight, but...
All right. I think you're being nice about it, but you're looking for any financial support as well? You also have a fundraiser of sorts coming up. Would you mind talking about that?
We were going to do one this month, but it's just too close. We're going to try to do one the end of January. We're waiting on a few bids on some food and some band. For us to take out of our bank account to put this on, to raise money, is not feasible. So, we're looking for some donations on. And we have a couple people that is willing to pay for a band to come in and stuff like that. But we're working on that. Black tie, $40, $50 plate dinner type deal, but it's going to be a... It's going to be pretty nice, I think.
Okay. Do you know if the city's given any money in the past either? If you can refresh my...
Not to the Honor Guard, no. I know the city was willing to help out in the wall project if we ran into problems, but with the rest of the community and stuff, we didn't have to worry about it.
So, you have nine and 10, and you needed...
We have almost $10,000, and we cannot get the other nine unless we raise the 18. Once we get the 18, the grant is good for a year. But we would like to have this done and uniforms in, because I got 40-some guys. I got to take all these patches off the old uniforms and get them on the new uniforms. I can do it in batches, and I'm going to have some bill there, too.
Okay. Is there a place? I'm getting some help up here, which is good. In fact, it's great. Is there a place people can donate?
Yes. Right now, we work under the logo of the VFW 6864 here in Cadillac, because they are a 501(c) for our tax deductible contributions. I think that's Post Office Box 943 here in Cadillac. We have got some donations to that. My expect the other day, why we hit over $9,000 is there was a personal check in there for $3,000 from a local individual. So... They'll all get recognized when it's all over. But I've had the check from Cadillac Castings, Avon, and some other private donations.
All right. But you're seeking donations from the community?
From the community. I got an advertisement coming out, I hope, within a week to help, you know, like the United Way has a thermometer type deal to say that we're here and this is where we want to be type deal, and get the word out a little bit more. I think we can do it without any other help, but I just thought I'd stop and let it know, and maybe TV 97 and 98 will have this on TV and some other people.
I think they will. We appreciate everything the Honor Guard has done in our community and this region, and you folks are driving all over northern Michigan oftentimes, representing Cadillac very well.
We do.
Thank you for your service and everyone that works in the Honor Guard.
I think I got... Tex is one of my guys that showed up tonight.
You have some helpers. So, we will definitely get this discussed.
Take it into consideration and see what happens.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions of Steve?
Phone number, in case someone is watching.
Use my cellphone numbers. It's the best way to do it. I am the commander, and I'm also the finance officer for the group. It's 231-884-3597, when I carry it.
It looks like the Memorial Day Parade is the plan. That's the first day it's going to be.
Yes. We normally go to Music Mushroom Festival if the weather's decent. I mean, we have some younger guys on there, but most of the guys are all retired. Some of the guys are in their 80s and stuff. We don't go out in nasty weather. It's not worth it. But we're going to put off Music Festival this year just for the pure and simple fact we want to debut these uniforms on Memorial Day in Cadillac.
Great. Well, thanks for all the work on the parades, too, throughout the years and your other community events. You're a very niche group of guys that have been stepping up and...
It's been fun for me.
Pulling off some nice stuff for our community.
Thank you.
Steve, thanks for coming tonight. Tex, as well, who's remained in the background. And we're going to give back your pictures. Those uniforms look wonderful. So, Marcus, it's our Community Spotlight, which, of course, included polite request for the city to consider maybe making a donation. And this is not a private group. It may seem private in its core, but certainly the community, the goodwill and recognition of veterans, and especially at the funerals. We've had questions asked to us in the recent past. What are we going to do? Is there a way we could step up more for veterans in the community? And this might be an opportune time to consider some funding to assist them, at least from my perspective. So, another thing on your list. And counsel, if you have individual thoughts on that and want to discuss those with Marcus, please do as well. Marcus, the city manager's report is next, and the entire leadership teams in the House as well, I wouldn't mind or be opposed to them being introduced tonight, too, since they deserve some spotlight for what they're about to undertake.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. That was actually... What was exactly on my mind was introducing Deb Gillis in a Cadillac Leadership Class for them to present to City Council the selection this year of their upcoming project. Definitely has a connection to the city.
Oh, great. That'd be quite a few of the...
Hi, Mayor. City Council. Kaitlyn Richard, 1589 East 22 Road, Cadillac, Michigan. I am a member of the 2013-2014 Leadership Class, and we are happy to bring our project to you. As after careful consideration and many other projects that we have pondered on, we have decided to put our swag equity and motivation into a project brought up by the city itself for an ADA-compliant play structure, which is the American With Disabilities Act play structure. Currently, the city does not have an ADA-compliant play structure, and they were given a grant by the Department of Natural Resources to construct one. And we're hoping to contribute to that construction by raising additional funds to make the project what it should be. So we are asking for your blessing to support our class and become our community partner. So...
If I can also add on to that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, after you're done with discussion, the appropriate action would be to authorize the signing of the community partner agreement with the Cadillac Leadership Class accordingly.
Say that again? Authorize?
Authorize the signing of the community partner agreement with the Cadillac Leadership Class.
Okay. Kaitlyn, thank you so much for that grand announcement. That is fabulous news. We're lucky to have received this grant, and we've not moved forward with it, probably for the reasons that you've talked about, which is financing. And this is, again, going to cost the taxpayers nothing. Another historic project accepted by your group and a gift, another wonderful gift to our community. So thank you for bringing that happy news to us tonight. And thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, Deb Gillis, who's here tonight as well, and your groups here. Do you want to introduce your group tonight? Are you able to do that on the fly? Or have them come on up to the mic one at a time and just dispose of their identities and where they're working, anything they would like to add?
Kelly Shute, Mercy Hospital.
Hello, Kelly.
Austin McClair, Rex Air.
Austin McClair.
Jeff Janett, Wexford, Missaki ISD.
Good evening.
Ray Burwald, Maguiar's Resort.
Okay.
Laura Hoysington, Wolverine Power.
Hi.
Dan Miller, Piranha Hoes.
Josh Hessling, Piranha Hoes.
Jenny Johnson, Harborview Apartments.
Oh, boy.
Jennifer Neff, Avon Protection Systems.
Jonathan Johnson, Wolverine Power.
Laura Johnson, Rec Boat.
Rex Air.
Tac Lee, Rex Air.
Nine and 10, Stephen.
Steve Drabek, Nine and 10 News, Fox 32.
All right. Thank you for all coming and serving on this committee and giving us a wonderful gift. Deb, did you want to say anything on behalf of your group as well? Thank you, Kaitlyn.
I'm Deb Gillis, Leadership Director for the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank our group. They've worked very hard in this decision process, as you can imagine. But we are prepared to take the City of Cadillac once again and enhance the park area for our community, so we're looking forward to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been on a streak here. Thanks so much for your investment into our inner city of Cadillac. You've been inside our city limits for a number of years here, or very close to it. Each one of them's added something special to our town. So keep that up. Thank you, all of you. And I don't know if you know how special this is going to be, because this is a nice project we've gotten from the state, and we do need a little bit of help. So, thanks to our staff as well, Mr. Tenza, the gang down there that supervises all this craziness. But good luck with your Leadership Class. I'm sure you're going to become a better person from it and be able to give more to our community. Thanks to each and every one of you for coming tonight. Again, thanks, Kaitlyn and Deb, for speaking, and all of you for introducing yourselves. Please thank your companies when you go back to work. The city appreciates this partnership and the investments that have been made over the years that are continuing to come our way. Just what makes our city so great. With that, we do have to file our move for a special motion here. That looks like we need to authorize the signing of the agreement.
I'll make that motion to authorize the signing of the community partner agreement. To whom? Who?
Be the mayor.
To the mayor, okay. And, let's see. And to approve the... Oh, there it is. To approve the lakefront play project as presented as well.
Okay. We have a motion in support. Any other discussion from counsel?
I just wanted to add, we're so lucky. This is the 14th year I've been here, and Deb's brought many projects from the Leadership Class, and it's amazing, because you're always coming in anticipation we're going to accept it and thanking us. But we really need to thank the Cadillac Leadership Class, because I know it's competitive. And I know you've had a member that came earlier, and we were all wondering, "Wonder what she's here for," and probably checking it out. But it's appreciated. I know there's a lot of projects you have that are opportunities. And every project, the last one, the pavilion at Kenwood Park, is just an amazing enhancement. And every one of them has been long-term. And so it's appreciated knowing the competition out there that you've selected to partner with us. And I got to tell you, the best part of the chamber dinners is watching the Leadership Class is great.
And also, this is the kind of project that just really strikes close to home for me. And a completely accessible playground is not only accessible for handicapped children, but for handicapped parents. And for someone who has a mom who's spent time in a wheelchair, watching my kids go off in a play area, knowing that if they fall, I can't get there, was very difficult. And this is going to make it a much more delightful experience for handicapped parents as well as the children. So thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in support. Any other discussion?
I just have a question for Marcus. At one time, there was some discussion about maybe leaving some or all of the existing play equipment there as we added to it with this. Do you know if that...
I don't believe the final layout's been decided yet. I know that there's an issue of having too much in one space and maybe taking some of the older equipment and reinstalling it in other areas around the community.
I know the existing swings, at least, get a lot of use. Yeah, they do. If we can somehow work around those, that might be nice. And I read in here that part of the project was to remove those.
It's the same location as where the new playground's going?
Is there... There was mention of raising funds. Is there any word yet, if there's any events or anything to let the public know about if they want to contribute?
Yes. In fact, the class has a plan in place. I'll let Kaitlyn speak on that. That's all right.
So we put together a public announcement just so that community members of residents can contribute to the project in private donation or public donation. And so we're putting that together. Some of our committee members, who are a part of the fundraising committee, will be heading that, and they will be able to take those funds and put them into an account for us. But we also have some set fundraisers that we do. The Leadership Class does typically every year with the family and friends auction dinner and so forth, so...
Awesome.
I was going to mention, when those come about, if you want to get that information to us, we can definitely promote it here at the meeting and start giving out phone numbers and what they need to be written to, the checks.
Absolutely.
We can supply that information to you tomorrow, actually. Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I think we should probably vote on this unless anyone has anything else. Sandy?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you so much for your investment and your hard work raising the money, for picking that wonderful project. See you, Steve. And we're going to amend our poverty exemption policy, possibly.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is something I believe that we do annually. In your packets, you'll see a copy of the 2013 amended policy. I apologize that it does not show any strike-throughs. I believe that the main primary change is the 2014 Poverty Guideline Chart that is included in it. Councilmember Stevens, I'm not sure if you had any comments on this item particularly. I know, being on Board of Review, you've offered some feedback in the past on this. Give me to put you right on the spot.
No, no. Thank you, because probably part of the council's thinking, "Wait a second. I thought we designed this so it didn't have to come every year." And we did that. And then the state of Michigan started requiring a few items. One of those was to make sure that it's approved every year, the new federal guidelines. So it was determined, really, the only change on this one will be those guidelines, and we will have to put this as part of our packet every year until the state changes that requirement.
The guidelines are what? The financial guidelines in particular?
I'm sorry. Under Section 8, Number 8, where they have the chart, it has the 2014 HHS Poverty Guidelines. They change those usually every year. And it's a simple fact that the state needs a motion or resolution. In this case, we just have to do a motion of the local governmental unit approving it. And I will tell you, there's been some other guidelines, and thanks to everybody here, this guideline's been being used as a basis for other governments, our policies. So that's good on a team effort, everybody doing that.
Okay. Would I like to make a motion to approve the amendment, if that's the position of our counsel?
I will make the motion to approve the amendment to the poverty exemption policy as presented.
Support.
And any further discussion or explanation to the public of what this is in the first place?
I'm sorry. Yes. That would have been a nice little add-on, wouldn't it? The Board of Review, that happens in March. This is the actually Poverty Guidelines, and this is good for anybody in the public or people who have family or relatives, that if somebody is a low income and they meet certain standards, they can apply for hardship exemption. And it also can mean if they have other issues, such as high health insurance or an issue like that. And got to give credit, Rick Charmley has helped promote this very well through the newspaper. The other part of this is the old adage that if somebody doesn't make enough income, they do not have to do their taxes, and they don't have to do taxes at the end of the year. That's true. But a lot of times, they miss out on... The state will give a property tax credit, where they actually give them monies back to pay their property taxes. And then there's also a heating credit. So thanks to Rick's promotion in the cities, we've been getting people that usually don't even do their taxes, they'll come away with $800 to $900, sometimes even higher, credits from the state. Some of them are looking at, shockingly, $5,000 to $6,000 income a year. So this policy's really aimed at helping those. Somebody could, between the two, they can... If they qualify, they may not be responsible for any taxes. And they can get the applications down here at the city or at the Equalization Department at the county, and they can do that usually from the beginning of January through the Board of Review.
Thank you. Very well done. We have a motion and then in this matter. Double-check. Has there been one?
I did. Discount.
All right. Discount, double-check. And support. Who supported that? Sure. Okay. Let's have a no more discussion, a roll call then.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The next request is from the Cadillac Housing Commission regarding an adjustment in compensation. At one of their recent board meetings, the Personnel Committee report stated a recommendation for a 3.5% wage increase for 2014, and that is what we are here this evening to consider approving. The director of the commission is here. Judy Myers is here this evening, if there are any questions.
Okay. Judy, did you wish to address us tonight? Thank you for being patient.
I don't really need to address you. I'm just here for my annual visit for you to approve our change in compensation package for this year.
Okay. Is that for all the employees, or how does that work, Marcus?
Yes, all employees.
Oh, Judy. Okay. Thank you. And this is kind of a pass-through with federal money or state money, Marcus?
It's not our money.
And we have a city staff member working with these folks?
We do.
Is that Jerry?
That would... Well, in this instance, it was Owen. We kind of take turns depending upon what the item might be.
Okay. Any concerns from staff?
Nope.
Okay. I would entertain and double-check. A motion on this as well, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cadillac Housing Commission compensation change request as presented.
Thank you. Is there support for Councilmember Shippers?
Support.
There is support. Councilmember Malama, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, motion carried. Good luck to you, Judy, I see you have something else coming up here, so you're probably not going too far. Thanks for coming back. You can come back and see us more than once a year. Maybe not, Marcus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city council began the process of looking at goals and goal concepts earlier this fall. We had discussed about setting another meeting for the second meeting in December. We didn't, we didn't actually set it, though. And so while we discussed it in the work session, we never came out and set it. And I just wanted to make sure that we do that before too much time goes by, and we're at the point now where that's our next meeting. So my suggestion perhaps is a 5:30 start. I do know that there's gonna be a council member unable to attend. I also believe, too, that this is gonna still be a continuation, or rather, that there'll be yet another continuation of the discussion into the new year as well. I suppose it's possible that things may end on the 16th, but I'm not predicting that. And so I see that perhaps on the 16th, we'll look at maybe yet another date, too. So, in any event, just throwing that out there, looking at setting a work session for the 16th at 5:30.
Okay. Would like to entertain a motion in that regard.
I'll make a motion that we set a work session for December 16th at 5:30 PM to finalize the goal-setting process.
Okay. Is there support for that? That is, again, at 5:30?
Support.
There is support? Any further discussion about our goal-setting work session for December 16th as proposed?
I just wanna say that I did send Marcus some ideas that I had, and you'll probably be receiving those when you sit down on the 16th. But I want you to know that, you know, when you're not actually in a meeting, sometimes it's different, because if I were there, I would know whether or not it was appropriate to try to move that particular item forward. So, and there's a list. So when you see them, I just kinda put everything down that I'd been thinking about, and, you know, if some of them stick fine, and if they don't, it's no big deal. Because I certainly don't want them to appear like this is what has to move forward as the city's goals, and that I would be upset if you didn't, you know. I mean, they're just things that I've had on my mind that I would, I think about from time to time, and if I were there, I would probably add them.
Okay.
So just take it in that light.
All right. We're sorry we scheduled those just the way they worked out.
Yeah, I am, too. I'd like to be there, frankly.
At least you're giving us some input, thank you for that, councilmember Spelman. Looks like we have a motion and support, and I'll double-check that. And any other discussion on the goal-setting? Go ahead, Sandy.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, motion carried. Next up, where are we with this, Marcus? We had a nice meeting tonight as well?
Yes, thank you. You had some comments I think you were gonna read.
Okay, so we're gonna proceed forward tonight. We're not completely done, though we've got a good, a pretty good place here, I think, with the evaluation. Is everybody comfortable if I proceed forward with a little discussion and where we are at this point? And basically, there has been an evaluation summary put together for city manager Marcus Petya in the month of November 2013. In accordance with the employment agreement between the city of Cadillac and Marcus Petya, city council has undertaken its fourth annual performance evaluation of the city manager. Actually, I think it's also part of the charter that we do evaluate our city manager on an annual basis, we've done that. The methodology is described as a standardized performance appraisal tool that was utilized. The same tool has been used in the city manager's previous evaluations. The evaluation process went as follows. The forms were distributed to members Melama, Shippers, Spelman, Stevens, Mayor Barnett, and Mr. Petya. Evaluation forms and written comments were returned to human resource coordinator Linda Kent. Scores for each performance category on the evaluation forms were totaled, then averaged, and written comments were compiled. The compilation was reviewed, and an evaluation summary was written by councilmember Doug Melama and Linda Kent. We kind of rotate our members, it was Doug's turn this year. The report was provided to Mayor Barnett, myself, and city council, excuse me, under the leadership of myself, who, I guess I am the city's contact person regarding the city manager's employment agreement. Council met with the city manager in closed session on November 18th, again, tonight, prior to our regular meeting, to review the results of the performance evaluation. I provided the city manager with the written report of the evaluation results. The city manager was provided an opportunity to provide feedback on the results, and I'm providing a public report at this time tonight of the city manager's evaluation at our meeting, which is on December 2nd, rather than November 18th. And we're 99% ready to wrap this up, but we've had some good meetings, actually, and responses were collected from the five members of city council, as well as Mr. Petya. Based on those complied, compiled, and averaged scores, city manager Marcus Petya received an overall rating of 2.94 on a scale of 1 to 5, basically a 3, which places him just slightly below the meets expectations he's in the, basically, he's meeting our expectations. There were some grades, obviously, above and below that, where he was well above expectations, and in some places, councilmembers believe needs improvement. And this has been actually a very good process from my perspective, and maybe one of the best ones we've had since Mr. Petya's been here. He also evaluated himself in the process, and that's always interesting as well, to put your employee in that position, what he did well in that regard, and his report was helpful to us. Marcus has strengths, according to the city council's evaluation scores, and those are communications, planning, and financial management, flexibility, adaptability, and areas to work on or need improvement are also listed in there. And city council is working and supports Mr. Petya very much in what looks to be his fourth year as our city manager. So his scores do reflect a meeting expectation level, he's just slightly below that, and our trends continue in the way we do this as a group, but I think the pluses and minuses all do come out, and we have a good evaluation at the end of the day, and good discussion. And we're coming, we're going to probably have some continued action steps for all of us to work together on, to make the city stronger, and our staff as strong as it can be. So the report is in, and he has met our expectations. I presume we're going to approve a contract either tonight, in fact, his contract ever greens anyway, but he, I don't know that we did get into, at this point, a salary, he's not asked for a raise since he's been here. We didn't get into that too much, but one might be in order if council is going to approve his contract, which is all but certain at this point, and he has not received a raise. What does council wish to do at this point? That's basically a summary of the process. Again, has been a good process, I think, for council and for our staff members, apparently asking to come back and keep working for our citizens through this board and our staff. Any comments, any remarks, or proceeding from here? He technically has not asked for a raise, and I know we were a little short on time, that's part of the 1% we needed to work on. Do you wanna handle that tonight, or where are we with regard to moving forward?
I thought that we were going to see the goals that we had communicated, and he was gonna work on, and then we're going to proceed from there. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and you were right with, in terms of the contract, it's continuing.
Okay.
But Ray did not have an opportunity to talk about an increase at one time. I think the idea of if the rest of the staff gets any type of increase, a one-time-only increase for, like we did last year.
A Christmas bonus.
Or a Christmas bonus, something like that, that he would be included in that. Other than that, we haven't had the discussion yet.
Yep. So, you know, so we have a couple more things to work on, those presumably would be at his request in the closed session. And do you want to take any action tonight, or leave things as they are for the, at this point, would that make sense? Any thoughts, Mr. Homier, from the left end?
No, I think you're following the proper procedure. The charter, the charter makes it clear that the city manager is appointed for an indefinite term, and the council shall fix his compensation. So in that regard, I don't think there's anything to do with respect to the contract unless, or the compensation, unless the council decides to do otherwise.
I would like to, at some point, look at fixing his compensation, since it was put that way.
By fixing?
I know exactly what you, I know what you mean, and I think that's something that four years is a long time to work your tuchus off without any raise at all. So I personally would like to see that looked into, as Owen starts sweating.
All good.
Okay, so at this point, council, how would, does council wish to make any statements at this time regarding our progress with our evaluation and future steps?
You raised the question, but are we doing that, like, the next meeting, like?
We will be going through the goals, what we decide, the first of the year?
I think that, I would like, I would prefer that, since councilmember Spelman will be unable to attend the next meeting, I think it's really important that a council that's moving forward should be in on that, as opposed to, you know, although it, but it should be the people who are moving ahead with overseeing the goals and, you know, helping with those goals.
I think Marcus needs some time to work on them, too.
Yeah, and that's, I think, how we left it, is that he would be working on those, and then I guess we could determine how far you get. You won't be here on the 16th, correct?
Right. You were gonna say something?
I was gonna simply say that with the purposes of scheduling the meeting itself, it could be, you know, we have a closed session placeholder on all of our agendas, it could simply be a part of one of those, an upcoming meeting, so. But as far as the timing goes, well, it's up to.
I don't really like a placeholder on the agenda for a closed session. I just gotta throw that out.
Neither do I.
Councilperson Spelman, would it be okay if you, if he shared those goals with you, and you had input with him, and then we could proceed from there? I don't know. Is that acceptable?
I think we could just schedule something in January.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what I would prefer, too. Gives a time for a reasonable, you know, instead of pounding something out in the next couple of weeks, I think it's something that's gonna take some reflection and thought.
Okay, so we'll allow, do we wanna set a, set that up, or do you wanna wait and just let that get set up in its due course through the new council?
When is the first meeting in January?
The 6th.
6th?
All right.
Why don't we set it up for the 6th?
Can we do it for the second one in January? To get, 'cause that first one...
Is the second gonna be a holiday?
The second meeting in January is actually gonna be suggested to be on the Tuesday. The 20th, I believe, is the Martin Luther King Day holiday, and we've customarily rescheduled it for the Tuesday following.
You have a problem with the 6th?
No. No, I'm okay with the 6th.
Okay, does council wish to take action on this, or have just an understanding of the process?
So would we do, we would do a session, an earlier session prior to the meeting then, correct?
Well, that's not gonna work either for the, there to be Spelman.
Oh, true.
Unless there's an earlier swearing incident, am I?
If I may add, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, certainly, I would set the date at council's pleasure, but it might make better sense to try doing this at the second meeting of January, just to be accommodated.
Okay. That's what I thought, 'cause the swearing and everything give time to.
We will plan on having council's calendar at your next meeting this month. Again, as something that we've done customarily, where we've laid out dates with holiday conflicts and so forth, and so then that date could be set as well, but I believe it would be Tuesday, January 21st. The third Monday, I believe, is the 20th, if this calendar's right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, any action necessary by council tonight on this item?
Do you wanna set that meeting now, or wait till?
Set it now.
I'll make a motion to set the next meeting for the city manager evaluation process to follow the second, no, excuse me, it doesn't have to follow.
Yeah, to proceed.
To proceed the second meeting in January.
Okay.
5:30 start?
At 5:30.
Support.
There's motion and support. Any further conversation on the annual performance evaluation? Mr. Petya, did you wish to say anything about your?
Yes, just for a quick moment, has no bearing on the vote. I just wanted to say once again that through everything that we all go through as a council and as staff, it has been a pleasure, again, serving this community for another year. My wife and kids and I really think of Cadillac as our home, and we feel very fortunate to be here, and I certainly feel very fortunate to be here and to be here in this role as well. I'm definitely looking forward and continuing my relationship with council, and certainly looking at all the feedback and improving myself and moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna pass through and not make any direct action on that item, and thank you, Mr. Petya, for your report from the city manager's side of things. Do we wanna take a vote on that? I apologize.
Setting the, setting the...
All right. Do you want to?
I believe there was a motion made.
All right. Sandy, can we take a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, thank you, and motion carries. Thanks again, Mr. Petya, for your comments and your efforts for the city. Next, looks like we have an introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Petya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I need to draw your attention in the, what I call the Cadillac Council cheat sheet. The date should be 2014, not 2013. This item, I may actually look at Owen to help provide some of the background, but in short, the city of Cadillac owns a parcel of property along Waldo Street. There is a map in the packet identifying the land itself that quite some time ago was transferred to the city from the housing commission. The housing commission, at this juncture, would actually like the property to be transferred back. It's my understanding that it will aid, perhaps in the future, with potential development plans that the commission may have for that area. I do believe Judy is still here this evening, should there be, should there be any questions? And at this time, it is our recommendation to set the public hearing for January 6th, 2014. And again, as a quick reminder, the charter requires the extra time due to land transference, which is why it's not at your next meeting, but rather at the one after that. Owen, I know you were working with Judy and their developer offline. Do you have anything you'd like to add on some of the background on this? Do you have anything you'd like to add on some of the background on this?
Yeah, I would draw attention to the parcel map that's in the, in the council packet. And there's two parcels, basically, that were part of the, the title search that the Housing Commission had done. One of them is just a small portion of the undeveloped land and the other one is the, lion's share of the parcel that the apartments over on Leeson Avenue take up. It's that big parcel of land that's in question here that's currently, when we did, when they had the title work done, that parcel is in the name of the city. We were able to find some paperwork from the 70s. Judy was able to find some minutes where the Housing Commission voted to title this over to the city. I searched through a couple of years of minutes back in the 70s and couldn't find any related information in our minutes. The only thing that we can, the only other thing that we can find is some, basically some trust agreements and those were based on some, some bond financing, it, it appears like, at the time, one of which explicitly says when the, the conditions are met, basically the bond conditions met, that the, the trust expires. So, it seems like, and as Judy and I were talking, you know, I don't know is, is not usually an acceptable answer. There's a lot that we don't know about what went on at the time. It appears like, from our best, the best conclusion that we can come up with the information we were able to find, it was related to some, some development that needed some bond financing, where the city stepped in, had to have possession of the land, did some kind of pledge, apparently, and helped with the development at that time, all of those. There's no outstanding bond financing or debt financing, either with the city or with the Housing Commission, that's related to the parcel. So, it really is unclear why, 40 years later, that piece of property is continuing to be in the city's name. If you look at it, you know, 60% of it, 65% of it or so is already developed and a portion of it then is vacant. So, they came and requested that the parcel just be deeded back to them. And in our research, we can't find any reason to not allow that to take place.
Again, this evening, we're just sitting in the public hearing?
Yep.
What's the last year you found something?
The Housing Commission found minutes from 1973 where their board voted to deed the parcel over to the city. So, it was originally in the Housing Commission's ownership. It, no, it didn't say why.
I have it here.
Yeah, that may be helpful, just to read that motion, I guess.
How old is that facility?
Judy, could you, would you mind coming forward, please?
What's the age of that facility?
And our records are pretty bad. We couldn't find a lot of things, so there is a lot of I-don't-know here. But this August 21st, 1973, Resolution Number 40, resolved that Cadillac Housing Commission deed the property purchased and recorded, Section 253 pages, city of Cadillac as directed by HUD Area Council and so stated in the contract of sale between AHB Associates and the city of Cadillac. Motion carried. And the commissioner at the time was Cinco and Lilly Slack and Samer, Samerich, Samerich? And the city manager was Mason and the CHC executive director was Wilcox.
And what year was that facility built, do you know?
74. So, we're, I'm assuming this is to build Cornerstone. That's all I could come up with.
Okay.
And now we are trying to get our ducks in a row to apply for a tax credit loan to develop new units out there and we can't do it unless the property's in our name.
And you have to have it in your name, then?
Yeah. So, that's the whole, that's what started this all.
Okay.
What do you think, Mr. Homier? Any opinion on that?
Well, certainly you have the authority to transfer the property and, you know, we drafted, we drafted a quick claim deed to, to transfer it or any interest that the city may have in it back. Other than that, you know, without knowing a lot of the background, it's really hard to determine whether or not, or how the city got the property, other than the transfer of the motion that was read. So, I, I don't disagree that, you know, there's no legal reason why the city cannot transfer it back to the Housing Commission.
So, we're making a motion, I'll do this, to make, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2013-3040, to introduce ordinance to transfer city-owned parcel to the Cadillac Housing Commission and set a public hearing for January 6th, 2014. Support.
Okay, there's a motion and support. And this is basically a property transfer. Doesn't it look like we just took ownership so we could move forward with the funding on the thing in the first?
That's what it looks like to me.
Or that be?
It needed to be in our name then, but it needs to be in their name now.
The issue is that we just can't find paperwork, one way or the other, on it, to say that definitively.
That's so curious.
So, is this to violate our charter by giving up an interest in land or without a vote of the public or not?
I don't believe so. I believe the referendum vote of the public is with respect to recreational areas.
As long as it's not parkland.
Lakefront, actually. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will have a roll call vote, Sandy.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. All right, good luck to you, Judy. Looks like Inland Lakes Machine Incorporated, Marcus.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Again, before you this evening is another IFT. This one is for Inland Lakes. They are looking at acquiring something called a Maisac Turning Centers and Horizontal Matching Center equipment for their facilities off of Haynes Street. This is for an amount of $288,000. It will assist them in retaining 38 positions as well as creating a new position and the number of years requested for the exemption is 12. The action being asked of the city council this evening is to simply set the, the hearing for December 16th, 2013, to consider this.
Okay. Thank you. Could we have a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-3037, which would set a public hearing for December 16th, 2013, for a tax, industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $288,000 for Inland Lakes Machine Incorporated.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion other than congratulations to Inland Lakes Machine for continued success and investment in our community? Anything else from anyone else? Hearing none, nothing else. Sandy, please, and a roll call.
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next resolution for your consideration establishes fees for solid waste and recyclable material collection. As a point of reference, after the city council actually adopted a resolution earlier this fall, it replaced a fee resolution that had language in it that referenced the fees specifically associated with refuse collection. In the original solid waste contract, this, one of the city attorneys had brought this to our attention and suggested that we, we put a new resolution in place, just making sure that everything is covered. I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to add a little, little finer point to that, but this resolution does include all, all fees associated with all solid waste and recyclable materials.
Yeah, this had to do, too, with the, some of the amendments that we made to the code regarding the recycling materials. This is really a cleanup issue, more than anything else, the fees. The relevant fees have not changed at all. We've just decided to put them in one fee schedule for both solid waste and recycling, instead of doing two separate resolutions, as was done. So, this is more of a cleanup issue than anything else. It puts both solid waste and recycling in one fee resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2013-3038, establishing fees for solid waste and recyclable material collection.
All right. Any?
Support?
There is support. Any further discussion or discussion?
Quick question. I know at one time when we were doing the recodification of the codes, there was a section that was just in our ordinances that was just fees, the different fee structures. Is that tied in with this? I mean, will this show up in those fees or is it a reason that it's in a separate area? Do you know?
Are you asking if this is gonna be a part of the fee schedule itself?
Yes. It's, I know that there, at one point, they used to have throughout the ordinances, they'd have the fees in each area and then there was a, a new section that laid out all the fees. These, of course, are new fees as well, but I didn't know this is a resolution versus being part of the ordinance. So, I didn't know if there's a clarification on that at all.
My, my, sort of forgive the, the expression, my knee-jerk reaction is that, yes, that this, that this will be in the fee schedule, but I only say that with the understanding that it's currently in the fee schedule as it is. If it's not currently in the fee schedule, then, then councilmember Stevens, that this would be still standalone. Owen, do you know offhand if this is in the fee schedule?
I was trying to think. I'll, I'll have to look.
It looks like Jeff is shaking his head no behind you.
I don't, I don't believe that it's in there.
The other utilities fees, I know, are explicitly a part of the, the utilities ordinance and that had to remain that way. So, those kinds of fees were not included as part of the fee schedule that was added to the back of the, of the code. So, this, this may be part of that. We'll just have to look to see if this will, if this will flow into there and if so, if there's a provision to make any of those changes via resolution instead of ordinance.
I just thought it'd be worth at least investigating to make sure we don't have to amend the ordinance.
Yeah, these, these are not in that fee ordinance currently and I don't think this will make them show up there. I think because it's related to the contract that we do for the services, I think that was the reason that we added the resolution to be able to take those contract fees, mark them up a little bit for our administration of the contracts and the billing and then that then sets those rates in accordance with the contract, so.
Okay, any further discussion, questions or anything that needs to be clarified further? Hearing nothing else, I'm going to call the motion. Sandy?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next resolution is with respect to the establishment of the position of Director of Law Enforcement Services and the abolishment of the position of Public Safety Director. As council mayor, may or may not recall, as a part of your, your last budget work sessions and meetings that we had in the preparation of the budget that we're in currently, we actually removed all of the funding for the Public Safety Director position. The city's been operating under essentially a, a, a non-public safety model for, for the last few years. One of the recommendations that we had in the Plant Moran Report was to look at bringing in a police chief, fire chief, another, another title that they called it was Director of, I believe, Police Services and Director of Fire Services. After receiving notice from Captain Wolfyle of his pending retirement at the end of, at the end of this year, he'll have his, his 25 years of public service. I began the, the conversation with Foster Swift and looking at what my options may be and trying at, at filling the position, essentially keeping the model the same that we have right now, which is, which is working from a fiduciary perspective and, and looking at retitle-ing or, and/or creating a, a position such as chief, such as chief for the police department. The city attorneys, not just Mike, but, but some of his colleagues and I have taken the last few weeks against, and since given notice and looked at, at what we would have to do. And Mike, jump in if you have to, but it looks like there, there are several issues that, that kinda came about. One is that in this particular situation, I can't simply create the position. There's an Attorney General's opinion that's out there that says, essentially guides, if not dictates, that it does require a council, a council voter, a vote of the, vote of the board. Additionally, there was analysis between that AG opinion and our own charter where it lays out what I'm able to do and what, what the city council's able to do. And sort of a long, long story short, it was the recommendation tonight to move forward with removing, formally removing the Public Safety Director position. We can always add it back if there's ever that, that desire to do so. And then creating the Director of Law Enforcement Services position and then I can start advertising for this job. It was something that I couldn't do until, until I knew exactly what the process is for fear of it being challenged down the road. So, I wanted to make sure that I basically hit all the, all the ducks in a row. And that's where we're at, that's where we're at this evening. There's also a description and so forth for the, for the position that I have put together, which is in your packets, I believe they're in your packets as well, that talk about, talk about the position. Linda, Canton, HR and I pulled together several descriptions from other similar communities and communities across the state. And then I, as manager, looked at it and put together a position that included responsibilities that I believe would best suit our organization moving forward, so.
Okay, this is something you have been working on with your colleague attorney, Mr. Homier, his group and yourself. Marcus?
Yes.
It's a city manager-driven item recommended by your office.
You're talking to me or what?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you mentioned.
This is not a council-driven item whatsoever, is it? I mean, I don't know that we were included in the discussion, is that correct?
No, the only, the only discussion the city council would have had would have been as a part of conversations with Plant Moran back when, when they were here, as well as a part of our budget process this past, past spring.
Okay, and this is consistent with the dual chief, dual captain, dual director of law enforcement, director of fire services?
Correct. I can't.
Or no?
Yes, it is, and I apologize if I interrupted you. I can't, in accordance with, with what I've been advised on, I can't simply change title or create this position. It requires, and I, and I apologize for the complication that this creates and frankly, for similar to the short notice, this literally got finalized, I think, over Thanksgiving. So, you know, we were, it's just, it's a, oh, it's been a long process to try to fully understand it and the reality is that I- to fully understand it, and the reality is that I can't simply change, change the title as I had planned on doing.
The, the city's, the city's charter has a provision that says that the council is responsible for creating new departments upon the recommendation of the city manager. And while it uses the word departments, there's an Attorney General opinions that applied it to specific positions, and in that case, in the Attorney General opinion, applied it to a Director of Public Safety position. And so, in that case, the Attorney General said that, in a similar language in that city's charter as the city does here, and in that case, the Attorney General said that the city manager does not have authority to create that position. He has authority to recommend, and council has the authority to approve. So after we looked at that language, we then, with the help of, of Owen Roberts, went back and determined that when the city created the position of Public Safety Director, it actually was Assistant, Assistant Manager of Public Safety.
Yeah, I believe it was called Assistant to the City Manager hyphen Public Safety.
And it turns out when the city created that position, they also did, the city council also created that position. So there is a past practice of city council approving those positions, and we think it's appropriate here based on the manager's recommendation.
Okay. And it's, all right. I just was curious of the history. I think you've done a nice job explaining that, and this has been in your hands actually for at least over a year or so, isn't it, Marcus, too, maybe? And you've been waiting, and we've got some movement, and you've, as city manager, since this is a city manager-run city, you are making a recommendation to us to approve this tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct. The concern that I have is really one of timing, and to be, to be honest, I mean, there's going to be a, a period of a gap that I'm going to try to mitigate as best as I can between the departure of Captain Wolfile and the position being filled. And, you know, the, just had a, feel like I'm almost in a chasing my tail kind of position where I don't want to get an ad out unless I know that, that this is, you know, this is where we're at. So.
Okay.
That was the concern.
We should point out too, that apart from when the Public Safety Director position was created by the city council, back when it was created, it also gave the manager authority to appoint that position. This position being, if the council chooses to create it, will be filled pursuant to Act 78 by the Civil Service Commission, because we, we've looked at it and think that that's appropriate because of the position that's being created. So it's not only a change in the position, but a change in the way or in the manner in which it will be filled. It will not be filled by a city manager appointment.
Meaning that it goes through the Civil Service Commission?
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Anybody with any discussion points at this point or motion?
Question. I guess about what the thinking was of changing it from a chief to a director? Is that what it is now? Is it chief?
No. Right now, we don't have that position at all. The highest ranking position currently in both police and fire is still.
It's captain. Excuse me. So we're creating, when we talked about it being that other option, other than a Public Safety Director, to have it be an option of a director in each department, and that being the second, the second best-case scenario?
Correct.
And something we can afford.
And something we can afford. And while I don't have any paperwork yet submitted from the highest ranking captain in the fire department to date, he certainly is, I believe, eligible to retire, and that could come in the future, or will, or will rather come eventually in the future. And we will need to put together the, the same package accordingly for consideration. I had only been focusing on, on the police side, and therefore had not put together a description for the fire side. If, if I had, theoretically, we could have been looking at, at just doing it and sort of one-stop shop, but in creating Director of Fire Services, but that was not ready to go tonight. So.
And this is within our budget to go this route?
Yes, this, this will keep things basically budget neutral. Which is, which is again, and I, forgive me for beating, kind of beating the horse over again, that's why we, the, the creation of our budget last spring, when we were going through our, our discussions where we presented, we, they basically said we've taken a Polaroid or a snapshot of both police and fire, and essentially just froze everything where it's at. So the complication comes in with respect to the state law for the most part.
Okay. So the Plant Moran study, you are saying the model that we would have under this would be exactly one of their recommendations?
Very similar. I, I don't want to say exactly, because I believe they added an extra position that I'm currently not looking at putting in place, but it's, it is similar, where it's essentially a two, a two-chief or two-director model.
But, I mean, putting it out here, if we're saying budget neutral, the part that's not being discussed tonight, is if we go with this, from my understanding, I've been told at least there would be not replacing the captain's position. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, I'm not looking at, at filling it. I'm going to have to keep that position open, only because I can't afford to have, have the position filled.
So in reality, the Plant Moran study would have had two changes from what they recommended. One was keeping a captain, and two was an additional employee.
And, and forgive me, because I don't have the study in front of me right now, I believe there was a model where they had that captain's position removed, and I think they had another model where it showed that it was still there as well.
But I think that, well, the captain, I think then that model, if I recall, was additional employment in other areas within the department. So we are actually, we had a study done, and I remember, that's what my concern was, why I voted no then, was because I was concerned, you know, with what we would get from it. But we've sat here as a council, I remember the fire department getting criticized by that board for even considering losing a position. And now, this option, it looks like would, we're eliminating the Public Works Director, basically.
Public Safety Director?
I'm sorry. Yes. Different department completely. Although, we did kind of.
Getting nervous.
That was the point.
I'm not getting nervous.
So Public Safety Director would be eliminated, the captain's position would be eliminated, this position would be a new position that would not address, I know we've had this concern even from that study, I think, of lack of membership in the, or excuse me, employees in the police department and what they're doing. And I know that criticism's come on to us of it being a council thing. We've gotten that, that Public Safety Committee that was put together, and pretty critical that we should be going a different avenue. And now this is not even staying neutral. We're kind of going back.
Well, the, the Public Safety Director's position has been gone already. It just hasn't been gone formally on paper. So this will, this will affect that change.
And then the other, I don't know, when did it come about that it had to be a council? Because I know we've recently, I know there's been other department changes that have not come to the council. And then even during that Plant Moran study, I know it was commented that this was kind of a nice gesture, include them in the council, because it could be a city manager decision.
There was a specific Attorney General's opinion that Foster Swift recently found, talking explicitly about Public Safety Director. So that's why it's come here.
But I know the one Attorney General opinion here is 1977, but this, you're saying only has to deal with public safety and not other departments?
I believe so.
No, your charter, the city's charter is pretty specific about the creation of that, and the section is, Section 3.10, "The council, upon recommendation of the manager, may create, abolish, or combine departments not inconsistent with law, and prescribe the functions thereof as it may deem necessary for the proper operation of the city government."
And the, and I saw that section. I was thinking back of a couple of changes we made with departments, like the.
The Buildings Department?
When we, when we took the engineering and public works and combined them, I don't really.
I believe you did bring that.
Recall a council action and, you know, and things like that. But even during that whole process, I was under the understanding that this was a, basically an opportunity that was in your, actually, that was part of the debate we had, is that we would probably be micromanaging. I think the council's final answer was, the way the budget was, we would probably be micromanaging, and we kind of left it to your decision. So this is, all of a sudden, at the last second, this is kind of a big switch.
Well, and that was my understanding as well until last week. I could simply hire a Public Safety Director without any council approval at all, but that was not the direction that I'm recommending, nor was that the direction that council, when we had our, a meeting in the fire garage, it was certainly not the consensus of this council either, that bringing a Public Safety Director back was the, was the way to go. So I did not know until I received, received word from legal that I simply can't hire or change the title as I thought I could until last week, because I had been trying to get the, the ad out for about a week or two. So that's where, that's where we're at today with it. And, you know, I, I don't want to say that delaying it is going to cause any, any undue hardship. It, it is just a delay. But I'm not, I'm not certain if there's another, if there's another idea that this council has versus, versus where, where I'm, where I'm coming from, certainly that's possible.
Well, in looking at the study, I remember many of the discussions, is that the two-chief system obviously is what the ideal system was. Well, at that time, we were having economic problems, and things weren't looking very good. And the Public Safety Director, in looking at that, a community our size, it really doesn't warrant a Public Safety Director for the community our size. And where our real need was, is that we needed additional officer. The other thing is, is that most communities that have Public Safety Directors do cross-training, and that was not a viable option at this time.
Well, it was certainly not an option that the departments were interested in looking at.
Yes.
Of becoming hybrid.
Yeah, right.
You know, police or a trained officer.
And we're going to continue to not pay the salary of a Public Safety Director, which has been a savings over the last four years.
It has. And we were facing economic tough times at that time. It's hilarious, fairly. Wow, I know.
It was worse then.
That savings, which is.
I wouldn't say that.
That savings, which is mitigated a little bit by giving an increase to the captain's position, is going to continue then. So not only is this budget neutral, but it's a savings that's been going on since the departure of our Public Safety Director. Is that true?
The only thing, the only thing I would add, Councilmember Stevens addressing your point, that, that's why we went back and looked at the 1990 resolution creating the position, because in 1990, the council, it was the council citing that provision under the charter, Section 310, that created the position. Now, you know, you can have, you can certainly have some adjustment within departments, and not all of those adjustments within departments have to be approved by council. But when you're talking about combination or eliminating those positions, then I think that section under the charter comes into play. So, you know, we, we had looked at it in relation to creating, say, a position and creating a department, which is what the charter says. And if you look at the Attorney General opinion, I agree that it's probably not well reasoned in that respect, creating position versus department. But when you go back then and look at what the council did in 1990, it was clear they believed they had the authority to create the position and did create it under that same charter. And so based on that past practice, we, we think it's advisable to follow that continued practice in relation to the Public Safety Director and the creation of this new position.
And going through Public Act 78? And again, the reason we're doing that now, when it wasn't technically in place before, is why?
Well, I don't know what happened with, with respect to that position. When the, when the, when the position was created, it was created as a, let me, I'll give you the exact title.
It was place fire in a building.
It was Assistant to the City Manager for Public Safety. And in that resolution, there was a specific reference that it was not going to be filled, sorry, that it would be determined outside of Act 78, the Civil Service Act. And that it would be appointed by the city manager. We don't think that's correct.
That was 19, just for reference, 1990.
Ninety.
Yeah. So this is not recent history.
So we think it should be filled pursuant to Act 78. We've provided for such in the resolution creating the position.
And there's some urgency to this, Mr. Petcher, based on the fact you'd like to list this job immediately?
Yeah, that, my, my preference is to be able to, to get the ad out. I drafted the description. The ad will be then based off of the description. But I can't do that until I know that this is set. And so that's, that's the timing issue. As I mentioned, there, there will inevitably be a gapping period. And so the question is, you know, how, you know, long or short that'll be. There's a lot of variables that'll be involved with respect to the process going through, going through civil service, but it's really up to council. But my recommendation would be to, to move it forward, just so I can get, get the ad out.
Very good. All right. Anyone else wish to discuss this?
Was this, I know that we had that Public Safety Committee that included all departments all that time, were they brought back together? Is this a recommendation from them, or did they not meet? I know we had two council members.
No, the, the committee basically went out of business, Councilmember Stevens, after the Plant Moran study was, was presented back to city council. Nothing that I'm recommending this evening is any different than what was last talked about with maintaining the two, you know, the two-director, two-chief system versus the public safety system. That was the last item that was discussed at the joint meeting between the council and the joint committee. So.
So what does the council say when we hear that we've got the staff's hands tied and these cuts are happening because of the council, because we're the ones that voted on it? What's the answer? Is this a, is this a strong recommendation from the staff, or is this a, you're not thinking you're getting the right support from the council to do what needs to be done?
Well, I, I think, as, as with anything good or bad or in between, council and city manager get blamed whether things are great or whether things are not so great. So I guess kind of, almost take it kind of as where that is. You know, I get the same blame as I think council will, one way or another. It's going to make some people happy and some people perhaps unhappy. But as, as city manager, I'm certainly advocating that we, we finalize the position that we've essentially been, or the, the model that we've been working with for, for quite some time, and, and look at making the classification changes and so forth.
That was the safe answer of what my question was.
Thank you.
So you're, you're saying, you're not looking at council tonight and saying, because of you guys not supporting, we've had some recent news that they've lost some accreditation, that they're not up to par, and it, it sounds like solid that you're planning on not filling another position. And that's coming from staff?
Well, I, I'm, I am your staff. It's coming from me. So. It's coming from me, so, I don't know if that helps.
This just seemed like, at the last second here, it just seems like a big shift, and I just...
Well, it's the same, I mean, forgive me for just jumping in, it's, it's the same concept that I've been talking about, and we've been talking about for, for a while now. It's just, we're now at the point where we realize, in order to affect that, that change formally, it requires an extra step that, that I didn't know two weeks ago was needed.
So, you would be moving forward with this, but for the new revelation regarding the necessity of having council move?
Correct.
All right. Anyone else, any other questions? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve or not the establishment of the new position of Director of Law Enforcement Services, and some abolishment going on there as well. Who would like to make that motion, if anyone?
This does not preclude the possibility, in the future, of financial windfall and moving toward the optimal system of a public safety director at some point in the future.
Of course.
We would just come and, and do that again.
And if I, if I may add to that as well, similar with respect to my comment about keeping a vacancy open in the command staff in the police department, I would be the first person to, to try to put that, those dollars back in the budget, as soon as they're available. It's not, it's not an ideal situation, operating with vacancies in your, whether it's police department, fire department, or any department, frankly. I've chosen to look at those positions first, to try to refill, you know, versus some other positions within the organization. But, it certainly is something that, that I would say, you know, obviously on the record here, that we would look at, at putting back. And, you know, with respect to the, the model itself, you know, being, you know, two directors or chiefs, you know, versus public safety, you know, I think, you know, the, the ability of, of having additional dollars coming in, additional revenues coming in, and then filling some of the vacant positions, and kind of bringing the, the force on both, both sides, police and fire back up to full strength, would be the first thing I would want to do. And then, look and kind of take pause, see how that looks, and then determine if it made sense to, to go back to a director role. But, hopefully, we'd be in a position where we could afford to actually keep the two.
The optimal system was the two-chief system.
The optimum system was the two-chief. It was not the public safety director. It's okay, there's arguments on both sides, but we spent $30,000.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as that was, I was like, wait.
We spent $30,000 to figure that out, and that is what works for us, plus the experts agreed, and it was obvious to me that we needed to change it, and others that were supportive throughout, the townships that saw our structures failing.
Also, looking at the job description, it isn't like there will be a gaping hole without a captain right there. It looks like this, this position will fill the duties that are now, and then some of...
So, basically, we're in track, in step with...
What we're supposed to, what we, what we were hoping for. So, in light of that, I'm going to make the motion to approve Resolution 2013-3039, establishing the position of Director of Law Enforcement Services, and abolishing the position of Director of Public Safety.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there support for Councilmember Shippers' motion? Support. There is support. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Mr. Pecha for his work on this as the city manager and our attorney. I was unaware it was coming on, or that it was coming to this level of completion, but he has discussed this over the last year, at least, on a semi-regular basis, that he was looking at this. And it's obvious the trigger's been the retirement of our staff, at least from the outside. So, good, thank you for your work, Mr. Pecha. There is motion and support. Any final discussion? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please provide us a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next are reports of boards and commissions. We have none of those. We have minutes of boards and commissions. The minutes of the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission, held on September 19th, and the Exeter County Airport Authority, looks like that was November 14th. Anything noteworthy in those minutes?
Not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're up to public comments. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We have three students, or maybe two, maybe three. How many are students tonight? All three?
We have a regular.
We do have a regular. She's good, full-credit couple, maybe two are regulars, I'm going to guess, but would you mind coming forward? Who your instructor is and what class you're here for? And anything else you want to let us have knowledge about with regard to watching the meeting tonight?
Well, my name's Ben Thomas. I go to Northern Michigan Christian School. I'm here for my government class, under Dave Inhitzma. Yeah.
What did you learn tonight, if, if anything?
Um, I'm not quite sure.
Welcome to our...
It's my bedtime, that's what I've learned.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Allison Mendel from Northern Michigan Christian School. I'm also in Ben's government class with Mr. Inhitzma.
All right. Here comes somebody we've seen before.
Anna Vaillancourt, I'm also in Ben's and Allison's government class with Mr. BH. And this is my fourth Cadillac consummate.
Wow, four.
Thank you for coming again.
And it's the longest.
I know. Okay. Public comments are open. Thank you for letting the students come up first, everyone. And anyone else wishing to give us some public comment? It is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. Seeing and hearing, no one else moving forward, we're going to pass through public, public comments. Close those. No tapered items. We do have good-of-the-order. What's on the good-of-the-order for Mr. Pecha tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Inhitzma, to the city council. I just wanted to thank all the organizers for the, for the Christmas event that took place the day after Thanksgiving. I received word that it went off without a hitch, and I think that's terrific, and just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody.
Okay. Councilmember Melama?
Just saw the lights coming into our council meeting, and the parks look beautiful. I want to thank our people there for the wonderful job on that. Kind of gets you in the Christmas mood. Kind of feel that Christmas mood right in my wallet. But, anyway, thank you. Great job. No CAM meeting in December, and we're taking a holiday break there, because schedules are difficult to put together. And, thank you, I think it's probably the mayor that put together that wonderful presentation with the football team and our wonderful Cadillac team did. I think you were probably instrumental in pulling that off, and you did a great job. You missed your calling there. You're really, really good at being an emcee there.
The Price is Right.
Yep, The Price is Right. Great job, though. Thank you. Great job to the team and the coaches. That's a tough, tough, I was a coach once for a short period of time, and that's a tough job, so, good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Melama, excuse me, Stevens? Sorry about that, compliment.
Just echoing what Councilmember Melama said about the football team, and I know I mentioned it to them, but another classy act is the whole team came by and shook everyone's hands. But, we really Cadillac through their athletics this year. It's, it's a year to remember for 2013. We've been lucky to have that, all of them come here, but they all do really represent our community well. And it's just witnessed, and, you know, in what they do. So, that's the neat, the school should be really proud, and the families and the parents as well. And I, I had another thing, and I forgot it, so, I'm done.
All right. Let us know if you recall, as we move around the table. Make allowances for that.
That disappoints you guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Spelman?
Yeah, it was great to see the whole football team and all the coaches here, but, and they look like a truly, a truly class act. And to give the award to Coach Webb was really sweet, and well-deserved. I know he was my son's coach way back in the late 90s, and he speaks very highly of The other thing that I wanted to draw attention to was, I was so impressed with the number of parents that were here. You know, those kids don't succeed unless they have a lot of support at home, and that was really evident tonight, so that's really good. My guess is that we're going to be honoring the girls volleyball team at our next meeting, I would hope.
Yes.
Somewhere along the line soon.
It's underway to occur at the 16th of December. Maybe we could just move them right up to the top of the agenda next time, if that's okay?
Sorry I'll miss that, because I know they had a wonderful season again this year as well. And finally, I'd like to thank Mayor Burnett for his dedication and effort over the last six years. This is my last meeting with him, and I'd like to say how much I appreciate the good work that he has done for the city of Cadillac.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Spelman?
Shippers?
Shippers, we'll call you Shippers.
Wolfers.
Councilmember Shippers, you're now up.
I, I, I want to, even though I said something earlier, just a shout-out to the leadership class. I think this is just such an amazing thing, for a community to have folks that, that whole notion of a leadership class, and then working together to complete a project, whatever that project is, to select a project, complete a project, and to become actively involved in your community. And for many, if not all, of the folks on this team, in this class, this will be probably the first time that they do anything like this, getting involved in the community like that. And that's something that is essential for building community. So, I'm really, a shout-out to those guys. Nice, nice job. Also, to Mr. Pecha, for enduring in-depth scrutinization, and with grace and aplomb, and, and a willingness to continue to, to grow for the benefit of our city. I appreciate that so much. I know the amount of work that you put in, and, and I will do whatever I can to help make your job successful.
We all will. Thank you so much, council, and everyone for sitting through tonight's meeting. Thanks for letting me get a little bit extra-winded with the football team. They certainly deserved it. It was a historic team after 118 years, and I think the city council did them right through our time tonight, and your comments related to their successes. They're a team, it's good to see a team like that. They've got leaders, the coaches, and the players are sort of like our citizens, and they all work together as a team. And when that happens, you, you'll see that success. I hope that is able to continue as we move forward. Want to thank Mr. Pecha, who's got a chest cold and a few other things, and he's made it through the meeting tonight without turning inside out. And we'll try to get him out of here, as it is getting to our usual hour. But, I would like to thank the state, who gave us money to start out that same facility through our state representative, Phil Potvin, who came, I know was instrumental in getting us that grant, so we have to thank him as well on the other side. Anytime we get state money, I think it's so important, and that should be maybe a focus that our city moves forward with, is how do we get more state money up here, and what's it going to take to lobby our state at the state level to get money back to municipalities like Cadillac? Anyway, thanks for, everyone, for your input tonight, the students, the other citizens that came and spoke out. We certainly are listening to everything that was said. And unless anyone has anything else that they want to respond, Mr. Pecha at this time, with any of the comments made at the beginning of the meeting, relative to a matter that's not under the city council's umbrella at this time?
I, the only thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, is that the, the issue is in front of the ethics board currently, and that process is got a, I guess they call it a strong framework, as outlined within the ordinance itself. The hearing date is actually going to be, I believe, about a week from now, on the 12th of December, and that's where we're at with it currently. It's not within the purview of the city council.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else as we close? Thanks again. Harry, thanks for coming, and Mr. Maxwell? We might want to give you just seats in those two places, because...
Reserve side.
The right and the left. All right. Thanks for attending, everybody, tonight, in all seriousness. Meeting adjourned.